I welcome everyone here to this ceremony to remember what Her Late Majesty Queen Elizabeth. It is right that we should come together to remember the late Queen. For she has been our head of state for longer than most people in this country have been alive. Indeed, she was the second longest-serving head of state in world history. What is more, whether or not we are the monarchies, everyone here will surely acknowledge that she carried out the demanding and often delicate role of head of state with grace, with understanding, with wisdom, and with genuine concern for people. It is also right that this should be a service which involves people of different faiths and recognises that there are many who do not have a defined faith. In the seventy years of the late Queen's reign, there were many changes, but few more profound than the effects of the development of this country and especially this city into a multi-ethnic, multicultural, and multi-faced society. And because of this diversity, we have become a more vibrant and more inclusive city. In this change, the late Queen was certainly an advocate, and for that, among so many other things, it is right that we should all come together to remember her today. And so, with proud thanksgivings and shared sorrow, we come together to mourn the death of Her Late Majesty Queen Elizabeth. As we remember and give thanks for her witness and example, we ask for strength and consolation from God, in whom she believes and on whom she relied all her days. Let us pray for our nation and the Commonwealth she served faithfully for more than seventy years, for our new kid Charles and all the members of the royal family at this time, for those who mourn and will feel distressed in any way at the ending of this significant era in our common life and history. Let us ask for resolve to face the coming days with courage and renew our commitments to uphold what is good and honorable and true in our society. And let us pledge together to serve those in need in this and every nation as we honour the memory of her late majesty. Let us pray. Blessed are you, Lord our God, lover of souls. You uphold us in life and sustain us in death. To you be glory unbreakable. And you give light to those in darkness who walk in the shadow of death. So remember in your kingdom your faithful servant Elizabeth, her many years of faithful service, her example of duty and devotion. That death may be for her the gate to life and to unending fellowship with you, where with your saints you live and reign, one in the perfect union of love, now and forever. Amen.
Blessed are you, Lord our God, King of the humans, who has given his glory to his children. Master of legions, who made for all the nations on this mountain a feast of flags, a feast of meat, rich and constantly lean. On this mountain he will eliminate the faces where he failed and prevailed, of all the nations and the masks that masked all the nations. He will eliminate dead forever, and my Lord God will erase tears of all faces. He will remove the shame of his nation from upon the entire earth. For God has spoken, and they will say on that day, "Behold, this is our God; we hoped to him that he would save us. This is God, for whom we pray. Let us exalt and be glad his salvation."
We've got now the five personal lectures about the life and the times of our late majesty. The first is from me, the Lord Man. I remember that when the late King died, people looked forward with hope and expectation to the new Elizabethan era. Many of us had visited the Festival of Britain in previous years and had wondered at the new invention in science, in technology, and in medicine. Whatever we might expect in this new exhilarating Elizabethan era, it would certainly involve great changes. Even so, no one could have envisaged just how tumultuous the seventy years of Elizabethan reign would be. Some things have been quite unsuccessful, like an unprecedented increase in large expectations. But many things have brought anxiety, worry, confusion, and even fear. Terrorism, the nuclear threat, wars involving our armed forces, economic recession, huge economic effects of multiple changes, unprecedented social upheavals. We have lived through tumultuous decades of change and upheaval. We have lived through times where the United Kingdom's role in the world changed, and then changed today. While the person, however, provided stability amidst the unsettling unpredictability of change, the Queen was always there, and almost always calm, smiling, the personification of continuity in challenging and changing times. For myself, I never spoke of the Queen, but on other occasions I was in her presence. What was always noticeable was that before she arrived, there was always a sense of concern, sometimes even anxiety, that things would go well. Were the preparations adequate? Had the organisers forgotten something? As soon as she arrived, however, she brought a sense of calm. And as she began to speak to people, you knew all would be well. For most of us, she was always there, the face on the back note, the face on the postage stamp. She was the person who, as head of state, reflected back to us what we are, what we had been, and what we are becoming in the nation. She has now gone, and we know that our nation will never be quite the same again. We will have to move on. Elizabeth, our Queen, may she rest in peace.
The seventh reflection comes from someone who had the honour to serve in the Royal York of Tanya. Tanya, as my core everyone knows, was hatching base here in our great city for over forty years. She was unique among royal palaces, not just because she could move across the world, consumed by the then government of the total tax, His Majesty George V's leadership in World War II. The then king realised that his heir was being majored in Uso, and consequently passed oversight of her construction to the then Princess Elizabeth and her consul, Prince Philip. Thus, unlike, say, Buckingham Palace, Buckingham and Balmoral, the Tanya was very much the late Queen's creation. One station for a royal embargment was immediately above the Royal Royal Park. And whatever the Queen came forward, she always had a happy smile, which certainly had nothing to do with C and B. Rather, it was because the Royal York's men strove to provide in as relaxed a way as possible the death of the Navy would provide, that is our notion. The summer voyage through the Western Isles with Scotland was a great favourite. It presented an unusual challenge when he was navigating Martha, yet there was no free plane route. Well, the holiday date programme, which he decided the night before, offered me there my shots on the weather map on the grand piano to draw joy. In my cabin, I had two drawers full of reg livers, containing photographs and descriptions of every beach he had ever been to. Fitness was very much a favourite activity, and the officers felt that they were inevitably bucking themselves in the presence of their staff. On one occasion, when I was on board, invited the standard make up aside for a game of football, causing the medical officer on board to have chaffiness and was forced to treating a broken roll derry. In the past few days, we heard much of her madness's charm, concern for others, and envy for others. In 1980, after a state trip in Norway, that country's then king embarked in Tanya so that their majesty could sail across the North Sea, jointly then to Rome for their new thunders and solid roads, and celebrate the eight hundredth anniversary of Saint Magnus' church in Daur, a principal founding church. We officers invited the world party drinks before dinner, flurrying about four days and weeks. We told the King of the Duke would come, the Queen would come if it is not drunk. Well, by my standards, it was what, ah, the Queen should come and enjoy herself. After a while, noticed the King Ola had dropped off an armchair. What nerve to do, what is the etiquette of a vacation like that? Typically, the Queen solves the matter. She looked around and said, "Oh, don't be waiting, does as he looks to the sweet." When I joined Tanya, I got a full set of beer. I was the first officer ever to join with one. This caused me some concern for some of the longstanding doctors, such as they urged me out with my boss to ask me to shave it off. I can't do that, he said. I had to turn out of that business two years later, not long before I was due to leave the office. That was just before I had my farewell audience with the Queen in Vienna. I told the manager about this, he looked at me and said, "Well, I'll argue that I..." Perhaps you'd try this, I'm five years old and I shaved it off and I'm not carried here. Maybe I could be great, just for a moment. Converse and actually, Bruce the Second, God save him, King.
I want to bring some joy to this gathering, because that is how I shall command the Queen. I first saw the Queen in Nigeria in the early nineteen fifties as a young schoolgirl. We were so delighted, because they come to school. The night before that we are going to be very busy, we're going to run live the stages because the Queen of England was coming. We were all so excited. What they didn't tell us was we were going to have to get up at five o'clock in the morning, because we have to walk over five miles to the stages in the dinner in Mount of Nigeria. However, the young girl, the young schoolgirl, we had been lined. When we arrived at the stages, three hours later, by eight o'clock in the morning, we had to stand and wait till almost noon for the Queen's car arrived. As it arrived, we all got so excited, and as it drew past cars, we were there waving all our hands, "Queen, welcome, Queen, welcome." It was noisy. She smiled and smiled like her face. But I thought, "Queen, there's supposed to be a lot of... It's been called, but this lady is very small." However, we enjoyed the day. I met the Queen again in 1918 at Buckingham Palace. This guy closed the clothes. I cursed him, and he shook my hand. I was dumbstruck. I am this close to the feet of the United Kingdom and the Commonwealth. Her eyes were kind. The smile was warm, and it sprays all over her face. It's infectious. I can't tell you what you asked me or what I said, I just couldn't bring the words out. I spent you months, you've been the outstanding consternant that's loved you for over seventy years, given your life for birth to the United Kingdom and the Commonwealth. And I thank you for the joy you have brought to many lives. May you rest in the name of God, amen.
Hello, I'm Sakura, the current and working reporter. And I'm a hardworking woman, important, often in my own way. I'm also here to talk about what the Queen and her husband are doing. In October nineteen forty, fourteen years old, registered to live in her first ever public agency on the radio, and will now be commanding to the following report. So ladies and gentlemen, we are here to talk to her, but the first part I want to do was how I see it on the front row of the bus, because there is no say in large parts that I can have the space. This quite initially would have been a children's event, however, I wrote a letter and wrote a paper to the one who has it today. The Queen's address, that article will have a show to be here today, because it has been called a gig. From her age, we listen to a certain strong last fashion foundation and people, which she carries away to the day, which is in a way more of a body of age than the height. Queen Elizabeth has accepted a lot more people, have the worst of the number in the seventeen twenty man group. Two thousand thirteen, she gave world attention to the search for Crown Act, which defined equal vice and throne by passing the orders. Queen's commitment to her own job, pay the way for all the others, that she takes herself to make it great. The things started to come, and the wrong ones, the right ones, the time and time having a camera and recording. I can't afford to have this much support, but thank you, you're my student, you're a firm teacher. If there's something special, I'd like to do that, we will have to go.
The minute silence will be an opportunity for a moment of reflection on the life-long service of Her Late Majesty, voted the United Kingdom, the realms of paradise, and the Commonwealth. Her late majesty was sure in her faith in her duty, reading constant things through seventy years of change. We will remember her with affectionate gratitude and silently give thanks in our hearts for her unswerving devotion to us and to our country. Please join me in a minute's silence.
Oh Allah, bless us all in this light.